And since George did all the work.
And staff, and staff, that is me.
It's really a-
Brittany and Joe too.
Yeah, we're taking it's a sort of roundtable session. But just to kind of review what we're up to. Our intention is to create something that can present good, uh, first, and then finally needs to be a set of amendments. For some issues. And so we don't have to like get any far shits or.
Made the neighborhood perfectly, I don't know, you wouldn't even know they were there.
So I'm uh in favor of this as written, I think we need to be aggressive in terms of uh improving the opportunities in town, we don't have a lot of uh good options. So I think we should be careful that when something comes up that's relatively easy to do, we don't do it, so.
I I think that it's important to note on that this particular issue, that scale. These units, especially to the ones that are visible from the outside, there's additions to them. It's just. Only that is pre-scale. As I, if it's scaled. We have.
But and then there was a ca- I mean, there was a cap on thirty percent or one thousand, whichever was lower.
I've never seen.
Now it's whatever's talking.
Two down was given and said the cap was larger.
Yeah.
Except when I came up here, I thought it was a great idea. I don't know whose idea.
Whichever's greater.
Yeah. What occurs to me is. I'm I'm saying larger numbers. And so I wonder about.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like six hundred is like an apartment, anything bigger, now we're getting, you know, now we're talking by the.
Well, if you're talking about trying to.
Subdivide a lot there, yeah.
To require a drop to the small and decide they need an indoor stream, they don't need all the space. So they don't have any.
Yeah.
Uh they need potentially, they need, what if you're you're uh a single mother with a child or two? They 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 need two bedrooms. I don't know, a lot of people stay at rent a year, they want an office space too, so. It goes back to the question, what are we trying to enable within that?
Well, remember those those numbers started with, I think, an attempt to to incrementally scale, you know, a small, you know, a a an eighteen hundred square foot house. You know, would would have a a smaller living unit than a four thousand square foot house. Because it's kind of a sliding scale as as you as you kind of ride up.
Two thousand.
Everybody gets at least six hundred square feet.
Right.
Yeah. Right, that's the math.
Better than usual.
Yeah. Yeah, see, see, I understand what you're saying, because I to- my my parents are going through this right now, where, you know, they had an ADU and now they're living in the ADU and their grandson is living in the house, you know, or something like that, like. So I, you know, and my mother keeps looking at me every day, like, when are you, when am I moving in? So, you know, trust me. But in my mind still, an ADU is still just an accessory, it is not a dwelling. You know, so I I again, this is not really what we're talking about specifically, but I'm good with the size, let's just put it that way.
You'd be surprised how small it can be. In Heartlands, my family had this little cottage out back, I was probably not actually allowed or not, but little little kid with his mom, like, single mom. It's very, very small space, but they they made it work, it's what they get aboard.
It was the budget though.
Sure. It was a big city, you're talking three and four hundred square.
Yeah, really.
No better than that studio.
No, that's a studio.
Six hundred is.
It's really meant to be like a s- uh a cohabitation situation with its own address and its own entrance, I think. More than it's intended to be like a whole family living somewhere. Like you said, if people wanna make it work, but.
Sometimes it just has to work, you know.
Is there a separate code for these accessory dwelling units, though, in terms of like, are they gonna be held to like an apartment standard? Because I don't know that that's.
They've got to be, they just have to meet buil- uh uh building code.
Building.
Yeah, so.
Building code, it's not just, it's not particularly onerous, it's 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 fair. It's not, you know.
Yeah.
Single family. Building code.
What I've asked. I don't know, I remember it's like coming in this two years, but I can, I I've asked people who came in. I've asked a few that have come along. The size of the unit. And I kept thinking, oh, yeah, that's it, that's it. I just wanted to make sure that there was an awareness, especially for me. You need to say. We haven't seen anybody ask for that.
We did, we just had one. The one that retracted its application. Okay, well, that was like four hundred square feet, that was not six hundred.
Is there any um, like, to that point, you know, if someone is is physically impaired and has needs a wheelchair. Six hundred feet is gonna be very, say, there's two people that need wheelchairs in that same space. Is there any exception or or would that be a special exception?
So so remember, you 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 do have language already for the for the the ADA accommodation.
Right, that's.
Yeah, okay, okay, right, okay.
So if you're gonna build it brand new.
Right.
You want to build it. And you're gonna make this.
Right, okay.
So remember, so just if you think about the math, too.
Thanks.
You know, a six hundred square foot unit is thirty percent of what of an eighteen hundred square foot house? Right, so that's the.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of that, a lot more houses in town that are that are bigger than that, so that's, that is the lower threshold, so, and on top of that, you would get, if it's built to.
Right.
ADA compliance, you get an additional ten percent.
Okay, good.
Uh of of the master floor area.
Perfect.
Uh uh you never know, I mean, there's always gonna be certain.
Right.
I don't know the answer, but it does occur to me. Now, but is that, should that be made available much, you know, to after then it has been approved and it's built and, you know, maybe it doesn't have.
Well, if it was staff approved, it would be pretty easy. Otherwise, they would have to come back through site plan and and or special exception for detached or a detached home.
Right, what it remains is it is in in a sense is structured the right. If it was an asset right. It's. Ten percent doesn't go away, just because.
Right.
No, no, right. So as I said, I mean, I I it it, you know, I think I think I think you heard from everybody, um, you know, I.
We'll come back.
So I.
You know.
However you wanna, however you wanna proceed, sir.
Well, I think that we should move on and try to get.
Okay.
A good ghost behind.
Right, right, right. So that's good, so uh inclusionary zoning, the the set aside requirement, we started back in January with um a draft and a discussion, and that draft had, um, I think the original draft had fifteen percent of the uh fifteen percent of the homes in any project, I think we had a sliding scale, but staff kinda would recommend, you know, maybe we keep it a little simpler at this point as opposed to worrying about a sliding scale, but happy to talk about that if you want. So the draft you have in front of you has fifteen percent, half, half of the fifteen at eighty percent of uh uh regional, uh, you know, Hartford area, AMI, and the other half at sixty percent. And we kind of took out the buyout or didn't feel that we don't have programs that handle that money anyway right now, I I think that's not a great idea. But a- as I, as I said, and as you remember, you did get uh some pushback from the development community on on the difficulty of of certainly getting to the sixty percent number and how to how to make that work without um without carrots, if you will, uh, you know, we don't really use density bonuses in Simsbury, we don't hardly ever even talk about density. Um, so so. So you did hear that. So this is, this is what it does, uh, you know, fifteen percent at uh half at sixty and half at eighty, anything over nine units.
Right.
Certainly a good starting point.
Mm-hmm.
You know, for d- for discussion or for going forward, um.
So I I I mentioned this uh at a previous meeting, but yeah, I I, so the the numbers here seem fine. Um, the only issue, I think, is that it has to add, there's a lot of stick here, and what it might do is be too onerous in order for anyone to actually be able to develop one of these kinds of uh dwelling uh dwelling units. So there has to be something we can give um that allows this to be more possible. Now, some towns I know do like tax incentives or whatever, I I'm not a fan of that approach. Uh, the process incentive, I think, is what's going to uh make this a lot easier to accomplish. So a process, so um some form of simplified process, it can be something like, uh, if it meets certain qualifications. Um, it's as of right, so it's within all of the zoning regs, it meets the fifteen or even uh twenty percent. But then it will, like, it will be approved, like, there's no, there's no worry about it having to go get a special exception or something like that, right? So that's a huge process bonus, they don't have to spend as much time and money on the lawyers.
Right.
Well.
Well, no, this does, I mean, think think about this as 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 trying to um dissuade the development community from filing an A thirty G to just to put a framework together that says, listen.
Yeah.
We wanna do this together, in the right spot, in the right location, in the right size, in the right, all that kind of stuff, so that's.
And this is not onerous if it's, we're giving them locations where we want this.
True, but it's, so fifteen percent, fifteen percent um at sixty or an eighty or whatever, um, is a significant challenge, especially for um, like a ten or like a a smaller apartment building, that's that's a lot of, that's a lot of money that they're gonna have to put into that and make a challenge. Yeah.
Contractor community is better, I mean. They were telling us, they can't do this, it won't get done.
In the in the absence of.
In the absence of a bonus, yeah.
Oh, uh, land being cheaper or.
Funding, exactly, and more taxes.
You don't have any particular control over that as a group.
Right.
Yeah, like honestly.
That's the challenge here for.
And you'd incentivize to do it.
To draft, I guess it's.
It's hard.
We take this and go to, I know Tucker didn't want that, but to go to the Board of Selectmen and say, we would do this policy if you would offer some tax.
So so that is, as I think you you and and Shannon probably know, that that is going to get to the Board of Selectmen through the affordability.
No, we're working on it, guys, we're working on it.
I was thinking of that, I'm like, that sounds familiar.
So.
What?
No, 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 I, no, no, so that's, that's gonna get there that way, but um.
Yeah.
Who knows, right, I mean, who who knows?
I I I agree with Tucker, I I think to make it a reality, we can't offer land to the building developers, so what could we offer, you know?
I I think that if you have this, um, if they are within these guidelines, and they're meeting all of the other codes. It's an as of right proposal, right, that prevents the A thirty G, um, and remember, what do we not like about A thirty G? Is that they don't have to abide by any of our zoning standards, this has to abide abide by all of them. And it is providing affordability, but what it does for the developer, what it does, it means it has a less lengthy process, it doesn't have to hire the lawyers.
But again, you're going away from a public hearing, so you're adding a development.
Correct. That is, that is the, that's the, that's the carrot.
Yeah, no, I I I think we could come up with something else where we can either help them find funding or taxes or something like that to add.
I think the easiest path, to be quite honest with you, um is to favor the units at eighty percent and disfavor any requirement at sixty percent. I I I think that, um, or do more research on on how to get there, that, I mean, every single developer uh uh that I've talked to says, God, I can't get you to sixty.
Yeah.
I can't get there, there's no pro forma that works to get to sixty percent. Now, sixty percent are folks that need that housing more than the, you know, you know, we, you know, what the numbers look like, eighty percent of AMI in the in this region is 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 not that small a number, it is below market, but it's 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 a it's a decent living wage.
Right, attainable, but if we.
Eighty six thousand dollars, whatever it is, it's real money, but.
Can we look at like then if it's it's fifteen percent at eighty, but then it's five percent if you do them at sixty? So you have more, so so there's, you're still putting in some, we're not getting the same number of units, but you've got more full paying units to offset the
You can do that.
less, you know, or whatever, I'm just saying, like, that's not great, but you'd be getting, you'd be getting those units. You know, you'd have to look at like how that equals out, it might make sense for them to put in fifteen at eighty, but sometimes they might opt, depending on what they're doing, to put a lower amount um at a more discounted rate for those people that need it, because you have to do something for them to be able to get to that sixty, if we wanna offer sixty at all.
If if it gets.
Otherwise, you can't get to it.
If it gets approved, I mean, the the concern now is, right, okay, I I've got a fifteen unit, whatever thing at at, you know, one of them's affordable. And it gets, it doesn't get approved, because it's too big, or it's too, it'll cause traffic, or there'll be illegal immigrants moving in, or whatever people say about it, right?
That's the problem, I'm not sure how to, I I'm I'm thinking about it as you say this. And I I know what you're saying, every residential application is gonna require a rezoning process. I mean, today, we don't have land that's zoned for it, right, we've got one piece of land and we're, you know, in a lawsuit on it, that that's kind of zoned at least for a little bit of residential.
Sure.
We don't, we don't, so any, any application is gonna require an entitlement first for you to change zone, or to uh or to approve the workforce, uh, you know, what we call it, you know, the housing.
Sure.
You know, the, I don't know what we're gonna call it, floating zone, whatever we're gonna call it, planned development district, so that's gonna it's, yeah, and I guess you're saying is that if you did it, y- you would simply have a straight decide plan process or something like that.
Right, and you you can limit it by putting it in only specific areas. And and what I'm describing is the bill I worked on last year when I was still at DSEC, right, I mean, that was our, that was our concept. We got a lot of traction on that concept, um, because the control comes in of the the where. Where do I want that kind of building? And if I want it here, I'm going to incentivize it to be built there by making it as for. That was the concept, at least.
Places for that, yeah.
No, most, as I, you know, most of these are, that's what, if you if you read the memo, I kinda, I kinda, you know, walked it back a little bit, which is to say, the the these, these kind of four items are are not broad game changers, they're not.
Right.
Not gonna change, it's not gonna change the fabric of the community, the landscape of the community, it's gonna be at the margins, it's gonna be adding eight units here and twelve units here and sixteen, I mean, which is.
But I can see this happening more than ADUs, this policy, there's an opportunity, so, it's good.
It's fabulous, right?
Oh, yeah.
And then what the turn I would have with the process changes, how do you quantify that financially for the developers?
Well, they, there's research about it, um, there's studies on it, um, it's it's a surprising amount, I'd have to go back.
That's the risk of denial.
Yeah, absolutely, there's that too.
It's it's the risk reward of of going through the process.
It's better off just doing an A thirty G. That's what, that's the thing about the higher and the harder, is that is that, you know, you may drive the developer to simply choose the A thirty G, because this is too difficult to do. But, you know, the A thirty G requires thirty percent.
And if we tell them, this is what we want, it's these areas, if we tell them, we wanna work with them, you know, have them come in for preliminary, which we've done in the past.
So, so that's.
Yes, we want this, please.
I just, I just think it's all about finding the right. You you you, you should adopt an inclusionary zoning set aside, a hundred percent, I think everybody here is willing to do that. It's, you know, what's that, what's the right mix, what's the right numbers, is it ten percent and at eighty, or is it, is it fifty? So that's, and you know, we've, we've, when we did the the memo back in in January, we went, we went, folks are all over the place, you know, friends in Canton just approved the fifteen percent at sixty and eighty, uh, you know, you know, Tallent has five percent.
For sure. The contractor community over there said they would never build it.
Yeah. So that is some of the same feedback we have, so again, my my only counsel to you today would be to be careful about the higher percentage and maybe focus on eighty percent. Get something on the books and you can start getting some units, and then you can see how it works.
Yeah, I like that, yeah.
I mean, I, you know, some of this, some, this is not, this is art.
Art.
It's not always science, and so.
So this says is though is townwide essentially, right, if you want to build.
Yeah, somebody would come, so so if you you had a subdivision, you know, you know, there's not that much ground, but somebody, somebody found a ten acre piece of ground and was like, right, maybe I can get an R forty, I can get sixteen units out of it, and so, yeah, the percentage would would apply.
But can I?
Yeah, climate.
But it's not town, what, yeah, it would have to have water and sewer, correct?
And so so so, no, because um, if you had, you know, if you were doing a, if you were doing a one acre subdivision.
Okay.
You wouldn't have to have water and sewer to do that.
So they'd be able to build nine units on a septic or shared septic or something?
No, the units would be single family, it wouldn't be.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, they would, you know, they would.
But wanted to answer Tucker's townwide.
Yeah, so, so, you know, the places where they're gonna have people who are looking for density, townhouses or condos or the middle, obviously, the water and sewer will have, would have to be available in one project, it wouldn't work.
Right.
Yes, but I I guess, I'm just saying conceivably, somebody could do a, you know, a larger lot subdivision.
Oh, sure.
Maybe there's thirty units and that would apply.
If there's land.
We would recommend it applies to across the board to every unit, yeah, over over nine, we we came up with, I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
That some, as you get smaller, I mean, that doesn't make sense, somebody's doing a four L lot subdivision.
Right, no, I mean, that 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 was the um that was the work of the bride number as well, it was uh under ten, I think, yeah.
Yeah, that's.
So I mean, that, and for the same reasons, is that it's it's financially in un- undoable, so.
I think back to the contractors, uh, back in January, say that eighty percent would be financially doable, yeah.
They said it would be hard.
It did, yeah.
Well, I know, you're not gonna say it's easy.
No.
Yeah, they, I don't recall them saying it was easy, but.
It's a little bit harder.
I have to, I have talked to local developers about this, and that is the sentiment that they can figure out a way to get to it.
Eighty percent is doable.
It is doable.
That's right.
That's what they say.
Yeah.
That's what they said, yeah, they can do it.
Yeah.
They can do it at eighty percent.
And why, and we have sixty just because we're trying to capture more, or do we have a requirement that we're trying to meet in the sixty?
No, you're, sixty is, sixty is the A thirty G standard.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're offering both.
You know, which which is, you know.
Either or.
Fifteen and sixty, fifteen and eighty.
Yeah.
Well, that for a proposal. Well.
Sixty and eighty.
Half and half.
How does that affect, how does that affect our moratorium numbers if they only ever do eighty?
Uh, they're not counted as bona fide set aside, it would not go towards that.
Right, which ultimately undermines the.
Yeah, but if you get zero, then you get zero.
Well.
But are we, are we only going toward the moratorium?
Right, I mean, right. Think we should.
No, we just said we want more.
Right, we want to pose more.
That's true.
Units, so, I I would like it has to go toward the moratorium.
Affordable.
No, I I would like. Okay.
But to be able to do both.
Yeah, I I I'd like to be able to do both, basically, that was, that was one of my, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand that, yes.
Yeah.
Well, it's what, I'm I'm listening.
So ba- basically, what I, one of the things I'd like to see with do, with some of our new uh ideas here is that we're both achieving our, we're increasing our share of affordable housing, and we're approaching a moratorium or approaching um the ten percent A thirty G requirement, where we're no longer subject to A thirty G at all, because we've simply built enough
For a period of four years.
of affordable housing.
If that day is that gonna be real.
Well, you know, do we, George is already working on that, Tucker.
Well. Well, yeah.
I don't know.
Well, is it like the the numbers that we're 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 uh working with the numbers in order to get the moratorium?
So let 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 me say it this way, uh, we're probably closer than you might think.
Yeah.
And we're working, we're working through those numbers now with the town administration and the and the town insurance office.
That's a surprise, you know, that's one of the.
Oh, that's good.
Well, can Tucker.
Closer to a moratorium, not closer to the ten percent.
Correct.
But there's, there's a link.
To your point, Tucker, we might not get there on this one, the inclusionary, we might not get as much affordable. I do think, we haven't got to this yet.
That's true.
I I do think that is attainable. When we get there.
Yeah, but I I I think there's some beauty here.
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed.
And most sixty percent. If they get it all. It's like folks. It's very similar. And I guess I'm I'm not excited about it. Yeah, but I'm not sure that.
Well, I like your suggestion.
The way it was laid out. I mean, we can hope.
So Kate, why don't you say what you 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 said before?
My suggestion, I mean, this was just off the off the top of my head, but I was just saying that because we're saying like half are sixty and half are eighty, but we think the sixty is less attainable, that you could do half like you could do that amount of sixty, but then not do the eighty at all, so you could opt for less at sixty. And so like if you had ten units, and then you'd have to have two units at sixty, but you wouldn't have to do anything else. Or or I mean, you would have, I'm sorry, you do like one unit, or you have to have bigger than ten, I guess, you have to be like at twenty. So if you had twenty units, then instead of doing, you you would have to do, um, to be at fifteen percent, you'd have to have like three units. But instead of having three units, you'd only have to have one unit, but it would be sixty percent. So you're having more people paying full rate, like, to accommodate for that lower ra- rent payer. Or or you're saying, or you do the full fifteen percent at eighty. And you're taking that hit, so I, you'd have to look at what the math, you'd you'd have to see where the math evens out, but it's like you could choose your poison, right? But it would maybe help people be able to afford that lower, so sometimes you wouldn't get any, but other times you might get less. It's not helping us at all, really, we're not gonna make big enough progress, but you're always gonna get something, and
But you always get, you always get something.
Right.
And that way, when it suits the developer a certain way, they have some options, but they're putting in, you're not getting as many.
Nice choice, there's some. Right.
Because it's making the math work better for the developer.
What we're saying, we offer.
Which are getting some, we're offering it, the sentiment exists, they're not getting, the sixty percent isn't getting written out completely.
Yeah.
And I don't know if it's appealing or it isn't appealing, but I would think we would wanna like, look at sort of like, do, like I said, do some math and sort of see where they, where those things meet similarly.
Well, I also think if somebody was to come forward.
The burden becomes a similar burden for both.
To George, then he knows that is our intent, you know what I mean, to like work with a builder to make that happen.
Yeah, I mean, I I I I I I think that, um, this, so this is a takeaway from tonight that I think we can vet in the next several weeks, I mean, we we talked to the development community about, about what if we, what if, what if we thought about doing it this way, what, you know, do the math for us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Tell us.
You know, tell tell us if if that's even, you know, can you do it, could could it be possible to make that work, and what are those numbers?
Yeah.
You know, by saying, we're we're definitely gonna have eighty percent, so, but what if, what if, what if, what if it was a little, how do you, how do you get to sixty?
Yeah, yeah.
And what if we just drop that percentage and somehow, we can have that conversation, right, we'll have that.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'd really like to see what that looked like, looks like, I I'd really like to. Good idea.
Yes, good job.
The other thing I would.
You're only getting a few for people to fight over, but, you know, it's like, I mean, it doesn't.
It just offers different variety, yeah.
Well, no, I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page. It doesn't matter whether the thing's sixty percent in or eighty percent in, units are identical.
Right, right.
The materials.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right.
All your documents, like, the government.
Yes.
The expense base doesn't change, it's just.
Right, yes.
The thing I wanna make sure we keep in mind is, uh, how can we incentivize builders to do this? Tax abatement, financing, I don't think we need, I don't think we should lose sight of that, I don't think we can just go.
Right.
Yeah, I, yes, I I agree, I agree, it will be more successful with.
Then they then just.
It was saying.
Yeah, I mean, there's gotta, we gotta make sure it's something that they're actually gonna buy into, so.
Local support.
Yeah.
Can't just be.
We're working on it.
Yep.
With the housing po- with the housing.
We're working on it.
That, yes, that's true.
You guess this is handling this, okay.
We are. With the housing policy, we've been talking, so, yeah.
Yep.
I I completely agree.
I can sense it.
It's like you'd like to hand them in, like, you'd like to take the developer and like usher them into the hands of somebody that will get some what they need, right, so that we can get through it somehow.
Yeah.
Okay, so on that, that's what.
So when you say the Board of Selectmen is on, it's just you talking.
So I'm I I'm saying that the Affordable Housing Committee, which was appointed by the Board of Selectmen, are working on a series of recommendations.
Oh.
And and there may be some land use stuff in there, but I I I think for the Board of Selectmen, the things that they can work on are going to be tax related, if they are interested in working on relative to affordability. And there may be other things, but but directly related to this, that is, you know, one of the things this group has talked about a little bit.
Yeah, also, I was at the meeting, there's this meeting about the implementation meeting, George with the P O C D, and I raised this with Curtis, Lily, uh, and he's, his reaction was if someone comes to the Board of Selectmen with a proposal, they'll consider it, you know, they'll think about it, but then, you know, in a vacuum.
Yeah, that's the other thing, you know, we don't really talk about this, because it doesn't happen, but but, um, you know, a a developer today could 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 ask for uh uh an abatement of of sorts, we have an abatement policy under our our business policies, it applies to multifamily houses. We don't, we haven't seen it, but but it is, um, there there is an abet, there is an opportunity to propose something.
Yeah. And like you said, I, I think they are open to it, and they are wanting feedback from this policy board.
Not sure we're taking advantage of.
But if there is an abatement, if there isn't the abatement, there's no tax stream, it's a zero.
Right.
Well.
It's a zero now, it's a business.
Right, so.
Unless, what we're talking about here is conceding the concern and commitment.
Well, yeah, that's the balance, isn't it, that's, that's the, that's the push pull.
Right. Process changes are free, just.
You're right, you're not wrong, you're not wrong.
We're gonna have your part.
Right. What, what is that talking about, do it now?
Next slide, George, next slide.
Okay, so now, um, you know, kind of two, so you'll have.
We don't get rid of.
So.
This is where I think we can make.
So we're suggesting two different, um, well, one is a, we're, we're suggesting ways to provide for smaller units on smaller lots, and the first is a standard zone, uh, and the second is going to be kind of tweaks to what you would call your workforce housing overlay. So the first thing we thought of was, well, this is what a standard zone would look like, you know, the way we are set up in this community, we, um, you know, we zone by, by, uh, we, by square footage. Right, we've got eighty thousand square foot lots and thirty thousand square foot lots and forty thousand square foot lots and twenty five thousand square foot lots and fifteen thousand square foot lots, although not very many fifteen thousand square foot lots, actually. So, this is a propos- th- th- this would introduce an R eight lot, a minimum eight thousand square foot lot, standard zone, so you had, you know, ten acres of piece of property that was owned R eighty today and, and it had water and sewer, it's probably not possible, but, you know, that person would come in for a, a zone change to this district. It, it would always, we're not, I wouldn't propose mapping any particular ground R eight, I would just let somebody come in and, and, you know, with, with a proposal. Uh, so, standard zone, so it's got standard frontages and the, the, the setbacks are, um, smaller than, than in our, um, you know, in our, our forty or in our fifteen. A small house, a small lot, uh, seventy five foot front, twenty five, eight sides, twenty five foot rear, um, and, and this version also introduces that if there was an R eight district, that two family homes would be permitted in the R eight district as a matter of right. And it would.
Can I ask a dumb question?
Sure.
So, you know, Ter- you know where I live?
Mm-hmm.
What size is that lot, like generally what it looks to be, is that you, you wanna know what it looks like?
So those lots are all over the place, so they are, um, anywhere from, you know, there's a couple of five thousand square foot lots, but it's mostly, it's mostly fifteen to twenty five.
Yeah. Okay, alright, so these are small lots then, okay, okay, that's, that's just trying to give them some perspective.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Particularly the stuff on, the stuff, the big, you know, the, the, the big, you know, subdivisioned area, you know, on the south side of Elm, all those units are twenty five.
If, if they were to, what's Cambridge, what's Cambridge Crossing, so they can get an idea of.
South side of Elm, yeah, where that.
Where my mom lives.
You're going up the hill, everything to the left.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
The ones in the village.
No, the opposite way.
Oh, oh, on that side, oh, on Center Street.
Yeah. Uh, is that Center Street?
Other Center.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Uh, Center Street extension.
Well, there's a lot of size, like by Hayes and all of that. Cambridge Crossing, going up Elm?
Um, best way to describe it.
On the left.
Didn't you ask me about both?
No, you know Willow Arm?
Yeah.
They're not really about size, but they're.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Willow Arm, Unloved, yeah.
But you only plan in eight.
The arms side.
Please don't fix that.
But I'm just saying, this, this is a good example to give people.
Seven, seven to nine. So I've got a couple pictures, I do have some pictures in a second.
The Cambridge Crossing behind Anthony's. That, that is a planned development that has small lots, okay, that's exactly what that was.
Thank you.
So I have, I have a couple of pictures.
So what, what's the square footage of the?
Thank you, that would be helpful, I need visualization.
He said they're right around eight.
Perfect, yeah, okay, good, thank you.
Yeah, trying to give a visual, thank you.
What's around eight?
The Cambridge Crossing, that, those neighborhoods?
So I'm, I'm gonna show a couple, well, I don't have Cambridge, I don't have Cambridge Crossing, but I could.
Well.
That's okay.
Um, alright, so hey, let me just finish up with the one point, so attached units, which we do not, you know, we don't have, we don't allow them, we don't allow them.
It's all visual.
Yeah, let's, okay.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yeah.
We don't allow them, except if they were in some sort of special planned development or workforce housing or just don't, we don't allow them, store.
Uh, just Cambridge Crossing, for instance, that could have been integrated.
There are some attached units there, they just haven't been built yet.
So we do permit.
That's a separate issue.
Yet.
Um, alright, so, so just for example, this is just, I'm just trying to give you a sense of what, 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 what a square footage looks like.
Okay, get it. Thank you.
Yes. I love it.
So this is an R fifteen zone that has mo- this is your right off of Hot Meadow.
Yep.
Yep.
Um, most of those lots are sixty five hundred square feet.
Step in.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Um, so this is.
Now, that was an E B, huh?
Horseshoe.
Uh, horseshoe.
It's a barge.
That is a barge.
That's the same thing.
Horseshoe Lane, Horseshoe Court.
Horseshoe Circle.
It's gotta be the same building there, I think.
Horseshoe Circle, so it's, it's zoned R fifteen and these are, these are really, these are kinda good, straight R fifteen lots, and most of them are, are R fifteen and R sixteen.
Right, so we're smaller.
Is it, is it name of that street?
Horseshoe.
This is Horseshoe Circle.
It's off of Owensboro, or, yeah, the top end of Owensboro.
Yeah.
Yes.
By the junior high.
Towards junior high, right, um, so, yeah, just so Terriff.
No.
It's a success.
Do you assess that?
You're mine.
Yeah, so, so go, I mean, people, in the village, those lots are small, but really everything else in Terriff is twenty five thousand square feet.
Okay.
And then.
And not, and not as small as you think they are, is what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah.
I think the twenty five thousand is Governor's Bridge, isn't it?
No, 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 no.
No.
Governor.
This is all, these are all the singles, as I said, off of, um.
This is the heights.
Yeah, the heights, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, this, this is smaller than, well, actually bigger than half an acre, that's what you're looking at.
That's a corner lot, too.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, so an acre is forty three hu- uh, thousand square feet.
Okay, that's interesting. Twenty three thousand, sorry, so this is like.
Forty three something.
It's gonna be a little bit long.
Twenty five thousand is like between five, of half, a little over half, a half essentially.
It's happening. Little over half, forty three thousand five six oh is bigger.
That's more than twenty five.
So what this gives us is like a planned development.
I just, I just want you to be able to see.
Thank you, that was helpful.
When we're talking about densities, that's all, and don't, so, I don't want everybody to say, we don't wanna be like West Hartford, so don't say it with the next, I did not intend to suggest that we should be like West Hartford, but this is what, this is what a six and eight thousand square foot lot looks like.
But their neighborhoods are okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
In West Hartford, and these are the size of the homes.
Yeah.
So that's what a, a, a zoning district like this could look like.
Okay.
That's what it looks like, that's what they are, they're a little closer, a little, all those kinds of things.
So it's plenty of room for the house, for the, for the garage.
Correct. Yeah, you're not getting it that bad, they're not gonna do it.
No, that was my point of weeks ago, when they got here about this.
You can have like a detached garage in the back when you do stuff like that.
And my point was, what are you trying to create?
He can be a little bit creative, for sure, but I, I, the, the point was just to show you what density looks like.
It's a long. Yeah.
It's all I'm trying to do here.
Thank you.
Um, so then, so, so just the two family stuff, just as, there are, there are places nationwide that are, that are, that are, that are considering these kinds of things, which is that if we talk about small lots and affordability.
We have land for sale right now, that somebody could take this and do a planned development.
See, they put those in the.
Yes.
It's, I mean, it's definitely a possibility right now.
Yes.
Where is that?
With water and sewer.
Yes.
Um, off of Huskins, there's land for sale.
Oh, yeah, where that, that, the old dormitory used to be or something, oh, yeah, I remember, I just jumped inside, I was like, no, it's not there anymore.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I'll buy it, I'll buy it.
But there's no options under your current zone, really, e- except for three units.
Right, and there's water and sewer, it was my point, and where that is.
Close.
Okay, could be attached.
So, so, so this, here's another dumb question.
Could be extended.
Some interesting. How is it in such a small lot that you could fit a duplex, like up and down?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, no, not, not, not.
No, absolutely, I lived in, I lived in a duplex in a sixty hundred square foot.
I don't think you can.
Okay, if, if everybody would just look at the picture, because it literally shows you how to do two families.
On like a quarter. This is really wild to me.
No, those lots, those lots are, they are, so what happens is, is, is you lay it out, you lay out the subdivision, so if you set an R eight, for instance, I was saying R eight,
Oh. I see.
this is a, a place where they, so the requirement is eleven thousand square foot lots.
Yeah, that's a bigger lot.
But they allow you to draw the, the property line down the middle as part of the subdivision at the wall
Yeah.
and create two fifty six hundred square foot lots.
Yeah, they look great.
I love that.
So that's how that works.
And especially if there's first floor living there, that works for so many people.
Um.
Yeah, that's nice.
Yeah.
If you're talking about the missing middle.
Yeah.
This is how to, this is an option of how to get there, I'm not telling you that's the only option, but it's just a way where you get some, and then, and I will.
Yeah.
And then, right, exactly.
Yes.
Well, it would be, but you'd have to go through, somebody would have to come into you with the acreage and say, I'd like to rezone to R eight, uh, and, and so you would approve the R eight
Right.
Yeah.
knowing that they could either do small singles or they could do duplex units there, you, they wouldn't have to, I would make them both as a matter of right, frankly.
I feel sixteen.
On a quarter, eight.
Is there a reason you're recommending having people come in and rezone, as opposed to just adjusting the zoning of different neighborhoods?
Could that, sorry, sorry.
What, what's the advantage there?
Well, the advantage is that, is that we'd have to do a mapping exercise and you would have to go through, you'd have to go through a process to map the zone.
Mm-hmm.
Right, they don't need, R eight doesn't exist anywhere today.
Right.
No color on the map that says R eight, so that's, it's, it's, it's the, so you.
Everything's already colored in.
Everything's colored in, but it's like somebody, you'd have to change the zone in order to do this, because we don't have one today.
Okay.
Without, I mean, I guess we could go through a mapping process. I, I, I think you're better, sir, I know, I, I know what you're gonna say and I, I mostly, I actually agree with you, but I think for process and the way we do things here.
Yeah.
I, I, I think it's, I think it's better for you to, to, to review, so you'd review an entitlement and you'd, you'd decide whether it's the right location for it. Does it fit in, I mean, again, it doesn't have to, well, these things can go next to two families, they can.
Yeah.
They don't, they don't, they don't really hurt property values, they don't, there's no data that suggests, but it might not be the right spot, there might be too much traffic, it might be, so there's,
They don't stand.
you, you would just go through a, an exercise as to whether, essentially, density in this location makes better sense.
Sure.
Weighing the fact that we want to introduce more affordable options.
Right.
It would be, hopefully it would weigh heavily on, on your thought process, but it's no guarantee that, 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 that you would approve it.
Right.
You, you still have to have a, oh, you have to have a public hearing process, uh, uh, for sure on something like this, I think.
Yeah.
That's what I would say.
I think this gets us to where we were saying what we want.
But.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, I do wanna make it easier, I know, I know, I know, I don't.
So my, my, my concern with that is I, I fully trust this zoning commission to really take into consideration everything and make good decisions when it comes to allowing for the R eight zone to be utilized, duplexes, but none of us are gonna live forever, none of us are gonna be on this board forever. Um, and I would hate for things to go back to the old ways of arbitrary decision making or anything like that.
Pretty interesting.
Well, you can stop it by making certain zones.
Especially the ones that are redefined as boards.
Sure, but by making certain zones, R eights. Sure, but then they have to rechange the zone as opposed to on any, every individual project.
I mean, that's the whole point, you elect people to do things, so they make the decisions based because they got elected, so.
Tucker, I just think that the challenge is, is that one, we don't have, we don't really have raw ground, and so this would be an occasion where, for instance, a piece of property that's seven acres in size, comes on the market, that maybe was an old farm or was this, and, um, it'd be no way to, in advance,
Four hundred.
Right.
I don't, I, I think it would be very difficult to in advance identify that piece of ground as a place that you wanna, that you would rezone to R eight. Um, you'd have a public hearing process and all the neighbors would come out on that without any details, you'd be like, we're, we're doing that property at R eight, well, how many units are gonna be there? So I, I just think it's really a challenge, and I'm not sure.
Well, I mean, like, just rezone one of our, some of our existing zones to R eight.
We, he's saying we don't have land.
No, you're saying where there's existing, uh, we, we build, the built environment's there.
Where there is existing. Built environments.
And then, and then you would wait for, you know, teardowns or, 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 or changes to the subdivision.
Yes. Exactly, yes, so an area that already exists, it's, it's now, if you want, you wanna sell your house, the next buyer wants to make it a duplex, they can, that would be the idea.
I have a feeling, Tucker, you're not gonna get any support for that, that idea does not wash, and so, why don't we save that?
Yeah, I'm not trying to poo it either, Tucker, I'm just trying to think about the logistics of how we would go about doing that.
You know, because we all have limited time on this.
Sure.
I mean, it, it allows some autonomy to the, the land, the buyer, is that what you're trying to get at, or?
Well, it's for, for the same, for the same reason that you would do that for the, for the, um, ADU.
ADUs, yeah, I'm following you, um, I, I, I follow you with what you're saying.
If you don't wanna do an ADU and wanna make two equal ones that does not have the potentially, um, the residency requirement, that would, that would in that case be an option. That's, that's all, same, don't have to, don't worry about that.
But the, the R eight zone is not, doesn't require access to city water, city.
It does.
It does.
It would, yeah, I, I, well, I would suggest it does.
He, I mean, he's got it right.
You can't, I only, you can't do it, you can't, you can't, you can't.
I wish, I forgot where I saw it.
Good.
Which limits, which limits the space anyway.
It, it does, I do have a map at the end, just to show everybody, to remind everybody what our sewer service area is and.
Well, I think, in general, it sounds to me like in concept, everybody's sports is R eight, I mean, I think, you know, how we implement it, it may be right what it is, but, but I think we're all in agreement that it's good.
Sounds like it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a different question, that's.
Good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, oh, that was just architecture, I mean, there's, there's so many different kinds of, there's good quality development doing good quality of design now, um, and that's just examples that, you know, can really.
I love that.
Anyway.
I'm a big fan.
Alright, so, so this, um.
Either, I just love that option, I, I just love that.
Yeah, I, yeah, and there, there's, there's just off the internet, it's not like us, but there, but you, you can do good things.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and again, I think what we've been hearing from our residents is we don't want apartment, like, but we do need the missing metal, I understand.
We have heard that, you've asked for it yourselves.
So I think this is, this, this is what gets us there. Yeah, keep going, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think the only thing to think about on this is whether, whether our, you know, whether our eight is not small enough.
To do that.
Yeah, but we care for how I say that, but, you know, is, is R, you know, R eight still gonna kind of push the not, not as affordable as you'd like?
Well, let me just, I think I have the number right, though, George, that Hendrix Lane, eight thirty dash G project on Climax Road.
Yes.
That was four acres, it's got nineteen houses.
Yep.
Four acres.
God damn.
Nineteen houses, well, yeah, when you drive through the area, it doesn't look like.
Yeah.
No, no.
Uh, I know people live up.
Yeah, those are like six and seven thousand square foot lots, I think, you should know, Jackie.
Yeah, houses.
Yeah, I think it's six, I don't think it's nineteen houses.
Seventeen.
Sixteen.
It was originally proposed as like twenty four.
Yeah, it's like sixteen.
Oh, I thought they were nineteen and nineteen, but.
But it was like.
Alright, so I would just keep it at eight for now, but anyway, that was, things, staff struggled a little bit, which is, what was that right number? Was it, was it eight, was it seven, was it six, was it nine, was it ten, so, I think that's where we end.
But you can, you can meet those setbacks when the, when the eight, okay.
Oh, absolutely, ab- absolutely, yeah. Well, you can, it's forcing a smaller unit.
Smaller unit, that's okay, I'm just thinking of that.
Yeah, you're talking about eighteen hundred twenty two square, twenty two hundred feet and, in fact, some of the research you did, some, some, some.
Sure.
Yeah. Two eighteen hundred units, though.
Yeah, yes, yeah, yes, but even, even so they're not.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, or twelve hundred, it is fine, yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah, you can't, but, so some towns have gone as far as.
Yeah, that's bigger.
Putting a, a, a maximum house size on their smaller lots. Anyway, just, I'm not suggesting that, but there are places that have done that, they'd say, you know, maximum twenty five hundred square foot house.
You have setbacks that kind of constrain that, that.
Yeah, just.
Tower of the house.
Well.
Alright, so last one.
That might be worth considering, still, even though.
Yeah, I've, I, I just don't have enough research on it.
Right, the problem is, when we put this on the table. You wanna be pretty sure.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, I'm comfortable with eight, for sure. Okay, so, you currently have in your zoning regulations, the townwide zoning regulations, called the workforce housing overlay zone. It has been used once and it is Cambridge Crossing, but it is designed as your most flexible housing option. It is, uh, a floating zone, meaning it could be dropped anywhere. Um, and I say anywhere, meaning it doesn't, the, the zoning process, you can place it on industrial, you can place it on commercial, you can place it on existing, um, residential land. So in a right location, it can be placed over the, that, that underlying zone. As I said, it has been used once, but it's designed, I'll come back to this slide, but I, but it's designed, this is what, this is your language today, so, staff isn't proposing any changes really to the existing language, so it allows for, um, this flexibility, a developer could come in today under this zone with a mixed use plan, um, or a multifamily plan, or a townhouse plan, or a duplex plan, or a single family plan. Uh, there is guidance on maximum, or direction on density for each of those categories, um, again, it's, we, we haven't seen it. It also carries under the current guidelines, a twenty percent affordability requirement. So, under the, under the draft, we have removed that, assuming you're going to a, a, adopt some sort of set aside requirement that would apply everywhere, to, to every development. So we took the twenty percent off, assuming you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna adopt a ten percent somewhere or a, for everything to apply, um, we.
Did you feel with taking the restriction of seven hundred fifty?
So I'm gonna talk about that, I didn't, I didn't make that change yet. So we include must have public water and sewer, there's a whole bunch of design guidelines, like eight pages of design guidelines that we recommend just deleting. I, I don't know why, we don't have design guidelines for regular houses or regular subdivisions, I, I don't think it got you anywhere, I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna have a design review as part of your application, we have design guidelines for residential units in the, in our own design book, so they'll make a recommendation as part of that design process. Uh, I, I just thought, I just didn't really understand.
I think we were worried about the density, maybe?
Say again?
When we were drafting that, I think we were worried about the density.
To show what it looked like and do those kinds of things.
Cause we didn't have anything, now that we do, maybe it feels like we don't need.
Right. May, may. Maybe, just seem, as I went through it, Jackie, it just, I'm not sure what it was bringing, because it was, it was, um. So there is, in, in. So there is, in, currently in that, in that, in that, in that, in that zone today, there is a a requirement that any development under this floating zone requirement would have, must be seven, within seven hundred and fifty feet of Hop Meadow Street. So I, uh we are suggesting removing that, and I'll tell you why we're suggesting it. Because it, because, because it requires a very, a very burdensome process, we haven't changed the process, it requires a rezoning process, two special exceptions, and referrals, and a site plan process. So, I think that you don't need this restriction for seven hundred and fifty feet, because you have a process for the special exception, which allows you to apply all that compatibility requirements. Um is it compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, does it have enough infrastructure, does it do this and does it do that? Such that, you know, maybe there's an opportunity at at two O two and forty four in Bushy Hill.
Yeah.
Or maybe there's a, you know, maybe there is another opportunity, I think, I think you've got a a built in process that allows you to subjectively decide, this is not the right location for this use. You know, or also say, if it's nine hundred feet from Hop Meadow, you could say, this is the right spot for this location, so, so I I I, you know, I'll be, I'll tell you, I looked at the math, I I don't know how you did Cambridge Crossing, Cambridge Crossing is not seven hundred and fifty feet, it's it's about eight hundred feet. So, I don't know how that happened, maybe they got a special exception to reduce that number, I don't know, um.
I think we wanted it, and we knew that they could connect to water and sewer, so it was adding housing, you know?
So s- s- so change the name, you know, do all that kind of stuff, um. It, this is the zone that most developers should be using, and I don't know why they haven't. It allows for flexibility, you can call your own setbacks. You can, you can use the, you know, you can use a mix of uses, uh just, I'm not sure why it hasn't
George.
Taken advantage of.
Well, cause it it had the twenty percent affordability requirement.
That's probably why.
I think we should just rename it developer's special.
Wait, to be clear, what?
I'm 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 just confused. So, the seven hundred fifty foot. So that the the property would have to be seven hundred and fifty feet from Hop Meadow Street.
Yes. That's, that's in your, that's in, that's in the, the current language says that, I suggest you take it out, yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, well, and why, is that related to water and sewer, or is it related to transportation access?
Probably both at the time, probably both at the time.
I figure it's transportation.
And I'm simply saying that, I I I think under the, under, under the process, because we require a special exception, when they choose the use, the zone already requires a special exception, you can say, there's not enough access. Therefore, it it can't go here, it shouldn't go here. I think it's too limiting, is what I'm trying to say, is that, I think you would want the flexibility to say, maybe there is a different location that we haven't thought of, maybe it's down Farms Village, I I I don't know, that's not gonna be past the high school, I I I'm not suggesting that's where it go, but but maybe it is, well, that's not gonna be within seven hundred and fifty feet, uh on Bushy Hills.
But, I was gonna say, was it because we didn't want it on Farms Village, and that's why?
I suspect, I I I don't know, I I I don't know, but that's.
Because people are like, we don't want this in West Semsbury?
In an R forty zone, probably.
Well, I I, well, I get myself in trouble, the high school's not in West Semsbury.
Yeah.
It's not. Sorry, it's not. It's it's a mile from Hop Meadow Street.
Yeah. But.
And that's a quarter, actually, P O C D says we want to revitalize with all kinds of.
True, then the floor area on the high school is nothing.
But if.
This this way, this way, this way from the high school, not that way from the high school.
But if if, and we know transportation isn't, is an issue, so if this was done to create transportation, or to to create accessibility to transportation, I feel like we need to say that, and um I'm I'm just concerned that other pieces, or other places in town are not as accessible to transportation as Hop Meadow is.
Okay, let's look at the map.
Okay, let's.
Let's do that.
Sorry.
So.
That was slap.
So, but I don't know, I I, Shannon, I don't know that that, I I don't know that that was the reason, I mean, those units are all single, Cambridge Crossing, they're all single family units.
It was, I mean, we made them do the sidewalk to connect.
There's no bus service there, and they never needed sidewalk.
To tenant two oh two sidewalk, so yeah, I mean, it was, accessibility was a big part of that.
Okay, just two things for the map that kind of helps you think about this. The first is the blue, so look at the blue first, the blue is a policy area in the P O C D um that talks about uh possible locations uh for for increased density essentially, and and you know, new housing development. And and the the P O C D, our friends in the planning commission, and they were putting this together, like, well, if we wanna encourage these housing, you know, new housing, develop, it'd be nice to tell everybody where 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 we're thinking. Now, it is not a, um, it's not an end all, because it's a policy, but by and large, uh the planning commission was thinking, you know, in the Hop Meadow corridor, out Farms Village, or West Semsbury, and um, you know, and at, you know, on the Avon Town Line, where where we have, you know, most of our tenants.
Well.
And then the red is uh the sewer service area.
Okay.
Where sewer service.
So you have some in the north end.
Yes. And terrafill. I I I just, I I, all I'm saying is, I think you when you, when you look at that criteria, the compatibility criteria and special exception process, which is gonna be, gonna be matched with a site plan and matched with a zoning entitlement, right, so you have to, you have to physically rezone the property to the floating zone. You you are going, you're gonna have every tool with which to ensure the location's the right location, based on the density and those kinds of things. Yeah, we're gonna, if we're gonna add density, it needs to be near infrastructure, ab- absolutely.
Remember that adding density near the infrastructure also encourages the state to increase its uh, its uh transportation resources to us. There has to be people for the buses to pick up, or for the bus station there.
Yes, I I I understand that, I think that's sort of a like, if you build it, they will come, kind of.
Yeah, we said that a lot when I was advocating for transportation development, it's like our whole thing.
And Shannon, my only, my only, my only, you can keep, you can keep seven fifteen, that doesn't, I don't, I don't really, it doesn't. Trying to, trying to reduce the burdens, I'm trying to, I mean, we're trying to do this, we want this to be attractive, and this, you know, the 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 more prohibitions you have.
Right. I I totally get that, I I totally get that, I just, we face this trans- this transportation issue, and I just
Yeah.
really think it's something that um we need to think about.
When you, when you say transportation, what are you talking about, like buses, mostly? We we have the, the bike trails also really give means to transportation for a lot of people.
It is, and it is.
Oh.
It is, but Tucker, to your point, it's not on Bushy Hill, and they're not.
Not accessible.
Right, and and to Shannon, I'm saying, we have sidewalks at least on tenant two oh two, for the most part, we don't have that on Bushy Hill.
Oh, right. But also, it's like, if you build it, they will come, so if you put in a big unit in West Semsbury, then, and everybody needs a bus there, then maybe the bus would go out that way.
That's what I'm saying, if you build a unit.
It has to be advocated for, which is, by linking up with the state with this kind of thing can be pretty helpful.
Yeah, well.
But I don't think that you can have a bus just loop by and hope people are gonna get on it, and then see if it's like.
We don't run a bus service, we're not, we're not, we're not running a bus business.
No, 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 no.
We'd, we'd have to work with our state elects to to get it there.
Right, and I I don't wanna like make this process more cumbersome than, I I'm just stating a a concern.
No, you're talking in reality.
Yeah, I mean, if we want to, if this is going to be, you know, workforce housing, then transportation is a critical part of workforce housing.
I completely agree.
It doesn't want to be workforce housing anymore, Shannon, he wants it to be floating housing, okay, sorry, floating workforce housing.
Floating opportunity areas.
Workforce housing is already a U M S.
I like that.
I didn't, but with that, that's other thing.
It doesn't mean anything, it's just a definition.
We want housing to be available to everyone, it could be folks who aren't working, it could be people who are retired, it could be, it could be
Right.
Right.
People who are, we're all in the workforce.
Right, but that's why you call it workforce housing, because if you call it accessible housing, people get all scared.
Nobody calls it workforce housing anymore. Um, we can call it whatever you guys want to call it, I just.
Okay, I'm done on that point now.
Just.
We can move on.
No, you, but your point is the infrastructure, your point is completely, that's the right, that's, I get it, I.
So, I'm gonna say something that, you know, but, I mean, do we want to encourage this kind of development? And again, in West Semsbury, you know, I mean, so so I understand that we, you know.
No, so, so, so. So you can't go there because there's no water and sewer.
I know, I'm not asking you, Tucker.
There's no water and sewer. And the the concept there was just about, it's an existing village, and that's where you build stuff, you know, that's where villages are.
Yeah.
Um but you don't have water and sewer there, so it's not gonna happen, at this density, so that's a, that's.
Okay, fine, fine, okay. Sorry, I just don't wanna, you know.
George is gonna hate me all day.
Unforeseen, yeah, yeah, unforeseen consequences, that's all, I just don't know, unintended consequences.
There's no water and sewer out there.
Okay.
So just quickly back with workforce housing, what were the major changes from the draft?
So, so the first major change, it it it's removed the twenty percent affordability requirement, right?
Okay.
And that's linked to the adoption.
It 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 would be.
Right, right.
And uh I removed the design guidelines.
Yeah.
And the seven hundred and fifty foot to Hop Meadow restriction.
But you leave in public water, public sewer.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, yes, absolutely.
So why are those two lines in yellow?
To remind myself to say it.
Okay, fair question, fair.
That's fair. Yeah, that seems, that seems reasonable.
That's fine.
I like it. Yeah. I don't know if removing the twenty percent affordable requirement will get us more, if you think it does, with fifteen percent or ten percent, or?
No, he's not talking about anybody in there.
No, I, so really, so the reason I removed it, because I am assuming you guys are gonna come to a an agreement on a, essentially a townwide number, I think that's why, right?
Even a little. Right.
If it, if it's townwide, there's no disincentive to use this, whereas right now, there's a massive disincentive to ever, right?
Yeah, that's why no one's using it.
Nobody's using it, because this, it's heavy, that burden is heavy, but.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Did nobody have ever asked for some compensation?
No.
No.
Again, that's, you know, you, it could, that's why we're at the margins, we're not, you're not, we don't get that kind of development, we'll be lucky to add several hundred units over the next ten years, you know, notwithstanding a predicted use of property.
I think these are all good.
Yeah.
So how do we, how do we, how do we come back? Like, where do we go from here to come back? And eventually have a public hearing on these items in uh December, maybe?
Do they have to all be heard at once?
They don't, they don't, they don't at all, but that, that was kind of the point of having the toolkit, is that we're thinking about these, this kind of bundle of strategies.
Can we just go with public hearing from here?
I kind of. I kind of like the idea of doing them all at once, because I think it's, especially if you
Probably could.
Yeah.
just present that there's four things that they're gonna be seeing, it will help people have a frame of mind, and not like
Right.
not over emphasize certain points on ones that aren't for that, like, we're trying to, we're putting things into these four buckets or whatever.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yep. Again, you'd go to public hearing in any draft language and change the draft language afterwards, e- even if you had to have another public hearing, I would say that.
Did we reach consensus on the ADUs, though? I thought that was still.
We did not.
I mean, I think it's, I think there's still some more.
Well, which?
Yeah.
I I think the ADUs are ready for, I think the ADUs are ready for prime time.
I think they did.
I think the question was, yeah, the the only question was whether or not we want the public hearing to be detached. And I don't know correctly, had made a final decision on that, that we were gonna come back to that, because we wanted to make sure we covered everything.
Right.
So.
Well, you can make what, more restrictive, not less restrictive, right?
Yeah, I would be open, I would be open to at least presenting at the public hearing, I would be very, very, I wanna hear what people have to say, but I would be open to
Yes, you can.
um, as right, for both detached and attached.
You you can't, you can't advertise and go to public hearing by saying, there will be a public hearing for detached units, and at the end of the public hearing, say that there won't be. You you have to, you have to, you have to be permissive, and then you can be more restrictive. So you can say, no public hearing, but then after public input, you're like, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna have, we're gonna keep a public hearing and a special exception for it.
But that's how you have it in the draft.
Yes, yeah, that's how I have it, that's right.
I think you were gonna talk to a couple more developers to see about those sixty, eighty meters, that would be.
Yes. Yeah, Tucker, I'm saying no public hearing in in my draft.
Yeah.
But I'm saying that, no public hearings for either, industry, but after your public hearing process, you could say, you you can
Right.
You can add.
You can amend that law, you can amend that and say, we should have a public hearing.
Right.
Without going back.
Which I think this one, then, I think we have all the information.
And I'm gonna do.
Well, we can do that even if everyone wants this.
Yeah, you can do whatever you want.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we only need four parts, do you have that?
That's true, yes, yeah, yes, yes, you can, you can still, you can still have a robust conversation about what the right thing to do is. And I'll follow up with the members of the development community on the numbers.
I mean, do you think that, whether the position where this is wrapping up for the public hearing, or do we need to have more discussion at this level? I mean, I I just think there's still a couple of, there's still some open issues.
Yeah, uh, okay.
Like, I'm, I'm undecided on the uh inclusionary zoning language.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I.
I mean, the the percentages, I mean, see, I think we should come back on that, I don't think we're ready to go to public hearing on that, I think we should come back, for sure, on that.
Yeah, the percentage. Right, right, so, I mean, if we're gonna go to public hearing, I'll look at the question, I think.
I think we do, on that.
Yeah.
If we wanna have more than one public hearing, then there are a couple of these things I think are right.
Uh, yeah, yeah, so I think, so so we come back in two weeks, right, on the twenty first. Uh, that doesn't look too heavy. So we can talk about this again on the twenty first.
Okay.
And just remember, you do not have a meeting the first Monday in November because of elections.
Okay. It's a collection.
So just remember that the November eighteenth is your next after that.
Yeah, November one.
Okay.
And I was only, I was thinking, if the earliest public hearing, December seventh, or whatever day that is, in in December.
Oh, you don't think we could do it in November?
So, I like the idea of the bundled thing, as I said earlier, but I'm also wondering if the public hearing is gonna be like ten hours long because of this.
That could be my thought.
Being bundled, and if people are going to get distracted, like, like if they're going to start confusing, and if it's gonna be hard for us to even take in the feedback, because it's gonna be all over the place.
So I'm just gonna be devil's advocate and play the opposite, if we put them out a little at a time, the people will be like, well, I didn't know there were two hearings, I went to the hearing, I thought this was the hearing, now I'm like, what?
That's right.
But.
Yeah, yeah, I know, and I kind of agree, like.
That's true.
And we're also getting into the holiday season, and people will be like, well, it's right around Christmas time, and we're busy, and I can't, you guys do it in December.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, okay. Let's just sit through it, as long as there's like a bad honeymoon.
You don't think there's any way that you do it in November?
Yes, I remember.
Cause we are gonna get that pushback, that we waited until December to do it.
Yes, we will.
I, but I wonder specifically about the ADUs, cause that has created such a such a scuttlebutt, you know, around town, people have been.
Yeah.
I think November would be better. Talking about ADUs, like, I don't know if that is worth doing separate.
We're not gonna be, the advertising won't work, we we won't be able to get to November, because you're gonna meet on on October twenty first.
For November. Yeah, um, but I might propose we wait till January for the public.
Yeah.
It will be a year, I don't.
I don't know, but.
Play about getting to December.
I think that's right, really.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes. People at the holidays, people are busy.
Christmas isn't on December seventh, it's not.
No, but we got that last, last year, people were really upset, I agree with Diane.
Yeah.
Early, early December, they were upset, like, they were upset.
I'm happy, I'm happy to schedule the public hearing at the time you said.
Single concerts is a lot more than.
And they didn't know, Tucker.
January is fine, second meeting in January.
Yeah, I think January is fine. Well, that gives us maybe some, some more opportunity to discuss.
Let's, this is what I would suggest, let's, let's go ahead and just, we we we.
I'll be in DC.
Have this conversation again on October twenty first, and on October twenty first, we can decide whether we're ready to go to public hearing, or figure out whether we push to January, it's up to you, there's no timelines on this.
Okay, so you'll get back to us about the inclusionary?
I will.
Okay.
Cool.
You're gonna get back to us at the meeting?
I am, I wait, I'm not gonna, there's no way I'll be ready.
Are we talking about this?
No, we're not talking about that, that's just, uh.
Okay. Nope. It's just.
FYI.
Oh, oh, yeah, we have our wrong date on there, maybe that should be October second.
What's that?
It says October, received October twenty second, so. Back to the future. It's all good, it's Tony's fault.
I just, all of that except for it's Tony's fault.
That's all you needed to know.
It's so funny, yeah, you added a second two, that's great.
George, does everybody have a copy of the circuit?
They do, yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, let me just mention this. It's just, it's not part of the freedom of speech, it's a state process, we can inherit of the people doing other things, for sure, and one of the things in a number of states, um, they have adaptive laws and regulations, they, they ADUs. ADUs can treat these kind of things, and so, the primary residence, or the primary dwelling and the ADUs can be titled separately, they don't have to. The owner of the property can make that decision, and it creates an opportunity for, if the owner of the property there's lots of scenarios, but if they have two older folks retired, and leave all the space in the big house, they don't necessarily wanna move out of town, they don't wanna put a detached ADU on the property, they is is what I found from a few pieces I read, I didn't have a lot of time on this, a lot of these ADUs. Is, is what I found from a few pieces I read, I didn't have a lot of time on this, a lot of these ADUs, it's all these. Sows and families, and family, but it's another tactic to create a lower cost. In, in a community that doesn't have more land to develop to create new home starts, the ADUs are gonna become a major factor. It's coming, and so, I thought it's worth being aware of, maybe add into it with a discussion, in terms of. And it presents a substantial economic opportunity for the people who. Or they need a room. That is, Tucker's mentioned a few times, that the ADU on the property oftentimes adds significant. It's another reason why people might wanna walk. Fact that it's about the detached. It's into the further discussion potential. There's more sense to it, potentially, to who gets to say their neighbors what's on neighbors' property. As I said earlier, you don't get a say, once your neighbor wants to build an addition, and what to do like it or not, they can tear their house down and build something else, you don't have anything to say. I don't know, we started this with detached ADUs, and to have a public. I don't, I don't, I wasn't. I don't know why they would get attached, the internal would be attached on the circuit, but frankly, how much difference is there to a, an attachment, it's an addition on the house.
Rich, do you have a report?
Ma'am?
Do you have a report?
Kind of report?
Planning director report.
Oh, I, yeah, I, I just, I just had two items, just for, just to, just FYI.
Okay.
Uh, may, maybe I told you this already, but the vessel, um, building permit is in.
Oh.
It's in.
Okay.
And under review, it's the building permit for the units, and the um Barbara Cove, Chris Nelson's project, the hundred seventy five units on Iron Horse.
Oh.
Coming in.
I didn't notice, like, it looked like it was.
I've seen some, like, some dirt moved.
It's in.
Yeah, I noticed some changes.
Infrastructure out there, there's, there's delivery, there's stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Interesting.
I did notice that moving dirt too.
Yeah, yeah. See, I drew a map, I was like, something looks different, yeah, some dirt.
I was gonna say, I'm saying uh.
Silverman.
Uh, hot, no, no, north, northern Hot Meadows with the address, the uh, no, 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 the Chipotle and the Starbucks.
Dorsey. Oh.
Oh, they have submitted a demolition permit for.
Hangerboard.
Yeah, you said, you told us that last time.
Yeah.
They just, I think, there's advertising and stuff, I think we're waiting on, um.
Yeah, I wasn't here.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're waiting on something, some hazardous uh materials, reports and stuff that are required as part of any demolition, they haven't submitted those, but they, they've got that ball rolling.
So progress.
Yeah, that's three things.
And do they have a tenant for the back building yet?
Not, not to my knowledge.
Is there anything else on the?
There is not.
Except casual observation, as we drive by there, usually cook twice a day. The progress is, is being made, but it's, it's not.
Oh, at the, oh, the picture I sent you, yeah, raising canes is open and functional, and not nearly the.
But it's crazy, they said.
The raising canes is open, functional, and not nearly as congested as we might have thought.
Yeah. No. Correct, not Enfield or what other, other levels, yeah, it's, it's been fine, going by.
No, no.
I think.
Nope.
I will tell you, they were really good to work with, we met three different times with them on.
Yeah, the big nursery.
On a traffic plan, and, 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 you know, and, um, you know, landlord there was very helpful, because they, they allowed queuing to come through, you know, all the way from one was
Did a great job.
Yeah.
Yes.
stop and chop all the way back through, and that really, then ended up working perfectly.
Yeah, that was smart. Well, that way it wasn't on Bushy Hill, right back up, so that's great.
Right, right, exactly, exactly, so, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that's good.
You guys did a nice job.
That worked, a lot of people worked on that, to get that right.
Oh, great, everything seemed to go very well, so that's great.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any word on, on Terrafill Post Office?
Right on top of it.
It's.
If you could.
You gotta have anything to report on Terrafill Post Office.
There's a big.
We were there.
They did ask me about that. Still beings, that, barely.
It's still there.
Still standing, amazingly. I'm gonna make a note, but.
That's it, that's it, that's all I have, everybody.
Oh, no, I thought you were, no, I was asking like, Terrafill Post Office.
Okay.
So, it is about completing all the items that run our agenda, did anybody wanna run this? Okay, motion, level motion, the jury, I mean, I'll favor say, I think.
Alright.
Alright.